Alrighty, thanks for texting. It is 1:06 and we are here for a meeting. And at this time, we have Commissioner Corn on line. Only one person in the audience, Mr. Bowman. And at this time, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Domke.
Alright, thank you. So at the request of a community member who is not in attendance.
What? That never happens.
But to which I think this was still a good exercise, at least for me, and then hopefully similar members of the community will find it beneficial, should they watch this recording in the future. We were asked during one of our business meetings if we would hold a workshop to go over the different advisory boards that the Board of County Commissioners has, to help the public better explain what they are, how many there are. So I went through an exercise and prepared a document that summarizes my understanding of our different advisory boards, councils, and committees. Some of this information is readily available on the county website. Some of the information has to be sought out in other areas of the website. And so this exercise is one where staff's already working on it, and then will work to confirm all of the information and provide a more updated and comprehensive list on the website to make it easier for the public to find in the future. And this particular document, I apologize, Mr. Bowman, this is not uploaded on the website at this time. I was in need of working on this over the weekend, so in any case, this will be available here in the near future. But essentially, our current advisory boards, councils, and committees, I'll go through and I'll read through the list just quickly, and then we can go back and talk about the role of each one. This particular simple table that I put together also references the applicable county ordinance and/or resolution or code associated with each of these entities and/or the associated statutory authority. So the list includes the Agricultural Protection Area Commission, the Airports Advisory Board, the Board of Community Guardian, the Fair Board, the Natural Resources Committee, the Priest Lake Television Translator District, which I will admit I became aware of for the first time while doing my research on this topic.
I have wondered on that one when we're going to get rid of that because they do not meet at all. And it was for a specific project.
Yes. And then the Snowmobile East, otherwise known as Sandpoint Advisory Board, the Snowmobile West, otherwise known as Priest Lake Advisory Board, and the Waterways Advisory Board. I listed separately the B O C C's advisory slash quasi judicial commissions, which are the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. And then also listed separately the former B O C C Advisory Council, which is now the Ambulance District Service Advisory Council, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. And then there's also a note that the Bonner County Solid Waste Advisory Committee was dissolved in 2025 by Resolution Number 2025-29. So to the best of my knowledge, this is a comprehensive list of our different boards, councils, and committees. If there's something like the Priest Lake Television Translator District that I did not discover in my research, then I will be happy to amend this document as such information comes forward. But going back up to the top of the list, the Agricultural Protection Area Commission, the way I've summarized this, if we already have a summary description somewhere on the website, I essentially reused that terminology, perhaps slightly truncated. If we did not yet have something posted, then I used statute and/or the ordinance, something similar that was available, to provide the brief description of the role of each one of these entities, these bodies. So the description of the role of the Agricultural Protection Area Commission is "to review and recommend approval or denial of applications for property to be included in agricultural protection area pursuant to the county agricultural protection area ordinance." Are there any questions, comments, or otherwise about this body?
Can we do it this way, since we've got a limited amount of people? If you're online and just want to unmute, and when he answers, you can just chime in since there's just two of you, that'll help us get through. Instead of pausing, waiting, looking, and seeing if someone raised their hand, we can just have a conversation. Commissioner Corn agrees with that because he gave a high five?
[laughing]
Alright, your next one.
The Airports Advisory Board, its role is to recommend policies, budgets, and actions associated with the use and maintenance of the county airports.
On this one, I, when I look at what, that we have to look at some of the things, this is a board where what their role is described as, they do more like the lot in looking at the RFPs. And so is that really a function that they were intended to do, or was that a function that was passed on to them from the Board of Commissioners? And it's really that the Board of Commissioners, is this a process where what it should be is that they are reviewing the RFP and recommending something to the Board of Commissioners to make a decision on? Because in part, when you look at our last quarterly review, one of the questions from a lot of the community is the feeling of, how is it that the board is making that decision? But when you look at the actual rules, it doesn't say that they're the ones that choose to accept the bids and they make the decision. It's that word recommendation in there. And I think the Board of Commissioners has to review, somewhere down the line was a function of the Board of County Commissioners relinquished to an advisory board that should not have been relinquished.
Okay, so we need to review this one.
Yeah, that one is on my review, the authority that is given to them. For example, we've had situations where, we had that with the fire hydrants. A deal was made about fire hydrants and it wasn't a commissioner. And I think that we've seen that happen with airport historically, and we've seen some costs associated, like with Silver Wings was a thing where it was a director said something. And so should we review Airport Advisory Board and update what their functions are? If it really is, then the function of the advisory board, is it the Board of County Commissioners that are supposed to approve the matrix that they use? So if you recall in the meeting that we had for advisory board, one of the issues that I brought forward to them was, the matrix that they're using for the lots tends to lean towards developers versus the private pilot. But there, we're not as a board approving a matrix. We're not approving the plan. They're telling us, and then, and then you get the note in our business meeting, but we're not doing that. And so that's one that I believe needs to be reviewed, and very clearly stating who's responsible, because a county, this happened with Silver Wings, a county employee cannot commit county funds for something.
Right.
But that has happened. And I think that is a point of leakage from the county, especially when you look at litigation, and not just the financial aspect, but the reputation that we have on the airports that we favor, one group versus another group. And I think we could have, as a Board of Commissioners historically, created something without actually doing it officially. And I think that that needs to be reviewed.
That makes perfect sense to me. And also for clarity, I didn't say this earlier, this written role that is here is one that I wrote based on what I've observed in practice, in a very simple high level. Because when looking for the resolution or the ordinance that created it, I could only find the resolution that combined the two airport boards. I couldn't find the original ordinances or resolutions that established them and defined what their purpose was.
I couldn't find that either. And the thing that gets me stuck, do you have this document electronically?
I do.
Can you email it to Bowman and Kramer since they're online? The, there isn't a document that says that, but what it's called is an advisory board. And the advisory portion, to me, means that some of, it's a recommend, a board that's to recommend based on their background. I think that some of, I think it requires a review of the structure.
Agreed.
And when I'm looking at doing like the performance reviews and whatnot, some of the issues I run into are, we don't have a clear understanding of all of what the advisory board is actually approving out there either, because it doesn't necessarily come before the board. We see the request for, let's do the fire hydrant, but sometimes I think that we're being asked for something that's already taken place, similar to the one where we gave a significant rental credit to three people because a verbal decision was made in emails and not a actual decision.
That makes sense. And I think what this exercise has done for me is realized where we may have some gaps in the data, like we were just talking about discovering the initial resolutions. It's, if some of these were created long enough ago, our electronic database is incomplete. And so that means that they're paper records only, and so there's additional work and research to do to try to figure out where those documents are, what the specifics are, and if we feel we need to amend those documents or create new ones if they're missing. So this, like I said, I've actually found this to be a very helpful exercise, because trying to track down the roots of some of these entities, these bodies, has been challenging. So this will be good for us to look at in more detail. And Mr. Kramer, I don't think I have your email address in my, my email address book, so if you-
I'll forward it to you so he doesn't have to see it online.
Okay.
Oh, I just emailed both of you, so you can respond.
Alright, thanks.
There you go. Any comments from the public on the Airport Advisory Board or anything?
I have one that came up a long time ago, but it really applies to all the boards. And this is when Director Shuck at one of the board meetings announced, I think it was the renewal or the refilling of vacant seats or right, terms had expired and they were being refilled by the same people. I forget how it went exactly. But I questioned it, because my question was, how are these people chosen and what's the application process? And it turned out that, well, you know, if we just kind of keep them around unless they don't want to be, or something along those lines. Nothing nefarious, but it's just like this. And I remarked at the time, and I think I have other times too, really for all of these boards and commissions, there really ought to be a central place that people know to go looking, you know, a list of them and what openings are coming up. And I know that some of them have been put out there, Planning Commission, zoning commission, but you kind of have to really know where to look and what you might need to do to go on the hunt. So that's just a place where it could be improved upon, that's all.
I don't disagree, and I think that it should be, and we're trying to work on that on the website, when you go on advisory and boards, I think the terms should be identified. And airports specifically has had quite the, and this is not about Dave Shuck, the airports have consistently had questions about, how do you get to be on the board, where people feel like when the term is up, that it should be open to all those interested, and all those interested should actually be interviewed. Whereas that's not the case with the Airport Advisory Board. When the term is up, if the person wants to serve again, we get a memo that says they want to continue to serve. And so there are other people that feel like that's not fair, that it should be open to everybody and the best candidate should be identified, not just people who want to continue on it. Because we don't do that for any of the other boards or committees, so why does the airport get to just automatically refill the same people? And I think that there needs to be, when we, when we address how we interview, because I think equally that also, there is an element of, unless we're talking about something private for the person, when you want to sit on an advisory board and committee, some of you has to be exposed to the public so that they too can ask questions of the people that are sitting, because we're giving a, it's kind of like it's a, you're running for a position to be on a board or committee without it being an elected but an appointed. And so why do we secret away the information about the individual wanting to sit on the board by calling it, oh, it's a job interview, therefore it's secreted under personnel versus, if you were running for this as public office, everything would be exposed to the public to ask questions. I think that we should review that, along with the process of which you get reinstated on boards, because to that end, Fair Board people, we've regularly, in this board, this commissioner board has said, yes, this person wants to reassign, but we've said, no, we need to advertise, and we've actually not reassigned the same people. So why does airport get to be any different than the other ones? So I think that has to be reviewed along with, arguably, some people have asked, you know, should there be term limits on how much you use the same people? And I think they feel that a lot when you hit the planning and zoning commissions. But-
Yeah, I agree, we need to be consistent with our approach to each one of these bodies when it comes to seeking and appointing members. And then Ms. Glasso and Mr. Kramer, hopefully, as well as Mr. Bowman, you've all received an email from me a few moments ago that have an attachment with the document that we're reviewing right now, since it was not posted to the website prior to the meeting, and that was because of my timing, not because of staff.
Ken, we'll get it posted so that you can see it online.
So the next entity is the Board of Community Guardian, and its role is to provide guardians for those people in need of guardianship, or for whom there is no person or corporation qualified and willing to act in such capacity. That language comes directly out of Idaho Code. Any questions or comments on that entity?
We need another one if anybody wants to be, to apply to be a community guardian.
Next, we have the Fair Board. And the role is "the care and custody of all property belonging to the county and used for fair purposes, and shall be responsible for all money received by it, raised by tax levy, or levies for fair purposes, as well as all receipts from the operation of the fair, and any other money received from other sources for fair purposes." This language also comes directly from state statute. Any questions or comments with association with the Fair Board? Alright, I'll move on to the Natural Resources Committee. Its role is to advise the B O C C on how to coordinate with the federal and state governments on natural resource issues impacting Bonner County. And for clarification, because I know there's been some confusion in the past, so folks understand, the word coordinate is a technical term, and essentially what that means is, when a federal agency associated with federal land is going to form a new policy or consider certain actions on that federal land, the federal code essentially indicates that they are required to allow the local jurisdictions, the local municipalities, to participate in the decision-making. However, they only have to do so if those entities have a natural resource plan or policy in place. And so this committee was formed specifically to provide the means by which to be able to be invited to have a seat at the table, to participate in those coordination conversations.
I think that this committee also has to be reviewed, because there's a lack of that action taking place. Like, for me, when you look at what's going on with the Albany Dam, I'm making sure that I stay up to date, but we've heard nothing from Natural Resources on that issue. I think that we've, kind of similar to some of the other boards, this board doesn't meet regularly, and they're not, we don't have a clear directive from the Board of County Commissioners on not just when they need to meet, but what is their process by which they're actually researching what's going on at the state and federal level? And what's, how are they making sure that if that's what they were coordinated for? There was a time when the Natural Resources Committee was put in place to address a very specific concern, I want to say it was Scotchman Peak in Bonner County, but then there's, it's kind of gone silent. And when you consider that we're updating a comprehensive plan with limited to no discussion with the Natural Resource Committee, one has to ask, is that working in the fashion that it was intended to work? And if not, do we need to address who's on the board, or do we need to create a resolution that better clearly defines what our expectations are? So I would like that, that committee to also be reviewed.
Yep, that makes sense. And if nothing else, it might just be a matter of offering guidance as to what topics we think would be beneficial to the county for them to take up.
And I absolutely agree. And then on this one too, I think you have a benefit in that the chair is also a representative, and that leads to what's happening down at the state level. As a board, we should be getting better reports. I know he did ask, do we want to do, we weren't ready to do one when he asked about their last meeting. But this one regularly has an issue with, some people come and then there is no quorum, so there's just a discussion. And we have to start telling people, if they're not coming and they're sitting on these committees, we have to start removing them, because people want to be on these committees.
The next one is very interesting. I'm more than willing to admit, in doing my research in preparation for this meeting, it was the first time I became aware of this particular body. It is the Priest Lake Television Translator District. Its role is "to serve the public interest, convenience, and necessity in the construction, maintenance, and operation of translator stations by appropriate electronic means for television program distribution. But the purposes are not meant to include the construction or operation of cable TV systems." So it's, I think valuable to note that the inception of this was 1976, when being able to relay or broadcast television frequencies was challenging in the Priest Lake area. So there is Idaho Code that talks about the ability to bring forward a petition to the Board of County Commissioners in order to form a district so that they can address those issues, which occurred in 1976. And I do not know whether or not it is active. The last set of meeting minutes is in May of 2018.
It is no longer active, and I think the board should pull this one up to dissolve it. I checked on that, it just wasn't a bring forward to get a vote on. It's very, very old.
So I guess we'll just need to confirm by statute how we go about the dissolution of such an entity?
Yes.
Okay. It was intriguing reading for me to see the history of it. So, any questions or comments on this particular body?
In 76, I don't think they were anticipating internet like we have.
I thought it was rather interesting that it was specifically states in statute that is not associated with the construction of a cable TV system.
Yeah.
So, alright. The next entity is the Snowmobile East, otherwise known as Sandpoint Advisory Board. And the one after that is Snowmobile West, otherwise known as Priest Lake Advisory Board. You'll note that the role of these is the same, with the exception that the East or Sandpoint Advisory Board also has the ability to create a special fund under Section 67-7160 in Idaho Code, and so that they can deposit and utilize monies outside of the county, such as Area 9B. So the overall role for both of these bodies is to serve in an advisory capacity relating to the establishment and- to the establishment and maintenance of parking and unloading areas on public and private property in the expenditure of money deposited in the County Snowmobile Fund. I find it interesting that I didn't see the trail grooming maintenance description and I'm wondering if that's just...
Evolved.
Listed, yeah, somewhere else, but we might want to look into whether or not we should be updating. This is one of those ones that I think are probably, these are probably established so long ago that they only exist in a paper record somewhere. I could not through extensive research find them anywhere in our digital records. So that's one of those items that is going to require some additional research.
Brian, do you know why these two are still separate, whereas like the Airport committees were combined some years ago?
Mr. Kramer, I do not know why these have been intentionally left apart.
I'll tell you why. It had to do with the distance, the need, and the volunteers. And so it, when you're talking about the different areas, it was people that are on the, the west Priest Lake side, that's kind of, they stay in their section. And so it was, that's the reason they segregated the two.
Do they have more unique issues and concerns potentially?
Yes, and you're talking about going, you know, that point where you're going all the way up towards Coolin area, that, that area, that's why they separated the two, is the distance traveled and the different types of routes. Because this started with people that were like avid snowmobilers and they were in the back country a lot and they knew their areas. And so to ask the people in the east to come to the west and vice versa, it wasn't realistic when their, their meeting is in their area. So that's why it was segregated that way.
Thank you. And do you know if they share the same pool of money?
They do share the same pool of money. It's managed by the same director. So it's all like Parks and Recs for the county, so that's Matt, he manages that aspect of it.
Is the one exception the special fund that they have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that, that special fund falls on a, under a different section of Idaho code?
Right.
Just for clarity.
Yep.
So there's a general shared budget and then there's a special fund or special budget.
And it goes specific kind of to their areas and needs.
And then the other entity we have under this initial group is the Waterways Advisory Board. Its role is to serve in an advisory capacity related to maintenance and improvement of waterways and expenditure of money deposited in the county vessel account, the evaluation of applications for grants to be awarded from the State Waterways Improvement Fund, excuse me, State Waterways Improvement Fund. This is another one where the role is language that I pulled out of the two sections of Idaho code because in the resolutions that I was able to find, those resolutions are associated with the formation, but I didn't see the specific roles and responsibilities defined this way. So I was pulling from statute to create a definition.
And I think that what...
I'm sorry?
There's two vacancies that will be at the end of the month that I just posted online.
Okay, thank you.
Two waterways vacancies.
We were just informed that there are two vacancies that will be upcoming at the end of this month.
Did you do it live?
On the Waterways Advisory Board.
I've just been informed, breaking news.
Well, break it out loud.
You didn't even...
Someone's speaking in my ear, let me...
Breaking news, two options. I think that with your point on the resolutions, I think that each, all of these advisory boards need to have a review of resolutions with an update that shows that we've reviewed it for the current needs because some of these resolutions are so old and the needs have changed with, with times. And I think it warrants an updated resolution of how we want to continue. And I think that can also include the terms and how you get put back on these boards.
That's a good point because some of these resolutions do specify the process and the terms for selection.
Yeah. And I think we could make a uniformed kind of resolution for this type of board. That way there's consistency throughout all of those boards.
Sorry, folks, just taking a note. All right, so into the next subcategory, which is the B O C C Advisory slash quasi-judicial commissions. So the Planning Commission's role is, it's responsible for recommending amendments of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and land use ordinances to the B O C C. The Planning Commission shall not consider amendments which are deemed to be quasi-judicial proceedings. So this is based on the current ordinance and language in Title 12 and that is actually being looked at right now for potential amendment. And then the Zoning Commission is similar in that it's responsible, is responsible for holding quasi-judicial hearings, but this one, it is specifically responsible for quasi-judicial hearings required by this title, which is Title 12 in Idaho code for applicable initiated land use requests, I'm sorry, for applicant initiated land use requests. The Zoning Commission or B O C C may appoint a hearing examiner upon approval by the B O C C. So this language comes out of Title 12 of our Bonner County Revised Code. And there, again, there's an ordinance that essentially, 655, is the ordinance that essentially took the combined Planning and Zoning Commission and separated them into two distinct bodies. But I couldn't find the original ordinance or resolutions that formed the planning, the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission. So that may also be a paper record somewhere to be tracked down. So as part of our review process, I'm hoping to, to track down all of the original documents where they're not currently easily accessible. And then the last category I have is the former B O C C Advisory Council, which is now the Ambulance Service District Advisory Council, since that board is a separate board, even though it's also the B O C C. So the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, its role as stated in ordinance number 456, the primary function is to advise the Ambulance Service District and the Board on matters pertaining to the provision of services within the county. And then I mean, yes?
Comment? So you may remember that a couple of months ago, when, when all the kerfuffle came about with the EMS, that I suggested that they put somebody on that committee who had experience and subject matter expertise with the fiscal matters. And then I was told that they already had someone on there like that and then I brought that up at a later meeting and then I was told that that committee is strictly advisory, strictly on clinical aspect. So if that's really what they are, that should be laid out somewhere, I would think.
My opinion is that's a matter of interpretation because I don't believe their language specifically reads that way. But it probably would be helpful to clarify that language with whatever the actual current intent is. And in concert with that, the board will be hearing at the next meeting, which will be next week's meeting of the Ambulance Service District. The ambulance district's legal counsel will be presenting the different options, the legal options for structure of the council under the different Idaho statutes. So that, you know, as that conversation plays out about the legal structure, if the ambulance district board wants to move in a different direction with the legal structure of the ambulance district, that would be another opportunity to consider, you know, how a potential change in the structure of the entity might result in how to consider an advisory council and its role.
Also, Mr. Bowman, the, I don't know why someone had said that they're only doing recommendations related to clinical services because when we had our review of what the rate increase was going to be, Chief Lindsay sent out an email to everybody on the board asking for their input. And in our open meeting, he said he wanted input from the IMSAC board. So I think that you're right in that there needs to be some very clear documented understanding of what the expectation is. I'll also say that partly when we did review seating people on that board, we specifically added another member to have a member who had a background in budgets to justify, because there is a comment that comes from IMSAC regarding funding as it relates to clinical services and a recommendation to the board such as the rate increase. So I, if that's, I do believe it is clear as mud there, but we're working on fixing that. I think this goes into the bucket of, inasmuch as some of these resolutions and ordinances need to be updated, the roles and responsibilities and expectations need to be updated and clearly defined such that members of the community can pull this and know exactly what to expect out of that particular board when they participate and ask questions.
Yeah. And then one other comment on that, and I've made this comment in the past, but it, it, the structure of that committee is, it's nonsensical that you have, that this committee exists to advise the chief and to advise the board, who, and the chief answers to the board, and you have the chief being the chairman of the committee that advises the chief and the chairman of the committee that, it just, it makes no sense at all. And it kind of got brushed aside because, well, it's just clinical. And, and if it's strictly a clinical role, then I guess I could understand that, although it's, it does, it still doesn't make sense even then, but when you get into the fiscal aspect, so all, all that needs to get taken into account and then, and then define what the structure is.
I don't disagree on the clinical aspect either because with respect to one of the things that I've asked that the ambulance district actually pay attention to is when you have the opportunity to do peer review, which they do do, that if I am the person in charge of making the decisions, I'm not the one who does the review. I might be adjacent to someone performing that review, but I'm not the deciding, I'm not the leader of that review. Because then it doesn't, it doesn't matter what you think about the individual, it's, do you trust the work product? In those cases, peer review doesn't include the person that's being reviewed. And when you're reviewing clinical services, you're reviewing the director's work in terms of how they lead. And so I don't disagree with you on that. The way in which the current bylaws state, it's that he is the chair. I think that that has to be reviewed also for the, for the openness of, we're taking a look at it as well. Your concern is valid and heard. We're trying to plug the, the big leaks so that we can work on the other ones. And it's not that it's not being heard, it's that we want to get, we're getting into the stable side of the ambulance district and then we're starting to clean up more things like this.
Copy that, thanks.
So that's a review of the list I created. Again, to the best of my knowledge, this is a comprehensive list. We do have documents that are challenging to locate because they're not readily electronically searchable. So there's more work to be done by the board on this and I'll continue to try to hunt these down and have more of that information available to the board and the public. But in preparation for today's meeting, I, I didn't want to delay the meeting because I couldn't find every single document. I wanted to have the conversation, start the conversation. It was advertised as a workshop and so I think it's appropriate to just say, this is where we're at with the knowledge we have at this time. And then as we've been discussing, let's look for opportunities and identify how we're going to improve on these bodies.
Was this advertised as B O C C Advisory Boards, comma, councils, and committees? And is the interpretation that it is only Bonner County, all of those, or is it Bonner County Advisory Boards, comma, councils? Because I want to say something in this meeting, if it doesn't require it to be the council or advisory board or committee of Bonner County.
I'm going to verify how it was advertised.
Special meeting, dash workshop, dash B C Advisory Board.
Okay. So I think that means Bonner County Advisory Boards. Okay. So I'll just give a, look this up comment then. A new committee has been formed at the state level. It was misadvertised as affordable housing, but it's one that Bonner County needs to pay attention to. It's actually called Land Use and Housing Study Committee. We were at the I A C and that's the one where I raised the question of what is that? I found out that Mayor Grimm has a seat on this committee now. I did reach out to, exactly what I said in that meeting was who's on it because I need to understand what they're doing. I did ask to be on this committee as well. Their first meeting is Wednesday. They are going to be here next week and it's not about affordable housing, it's about ordinances and rules that we have in place that are making development difficult, which is Mayor Grimm's participation is not as mayor of Sandpoint, it as, is as whiskey planning. So I said, oh yeah, I need a seat on that. So I'm going to sit on this committee, but the Bonner County should be aware that this is happening because in part, some of this is going to be removing red tape, is what they're calling it. And it's not, it was not stated correctly at I A C when I, affordable housing, what about those who live here? That's not what they're doing. So be aware, Wednesday. I'm going to post it, I'll put it on Facebook and send everybody an email of the link to it because you can watch this meeting at the state level. But that's a huge one, I think.
That'll be very important to track.
Yes. So we'll call it, it's a committee and maybe it's be Bonner County related because we're growth growing. But anyhow.
Yeah, any, any committee that has to do with land use in our state involves Bonner County.
I don't know why I A C called it affordable housing.
That's really confusing.
I did speak with Jordan Redmond this morning and Woodward on this because both of them sit on this and they didn't reach out to a lot of counties to participate, but it has a lot of developers that are on this committee. Because yes, you get a state rep that's on it, but then the state rep can appoint other people to sit on the committee. So Woodward appointed Jeremy Grimm to sit on this committee.
And the state rep is in construction.
So I asked Redmond, I'd like to sit on this committee. So he's going to appoint me to sit on this committee, but we need to be watching this one. This is very specific to opening up development. So...
Very interesting.
What, what's the name of that committee again?
Land, Land Use and Housing Study Committee. I will send you this document to all three of you since you're on line, so you can see the meeting notice with the Zoom link.
Do you happen, this, I'm just curious not to get off on a tangent, but do you happen to know the genesis of this committee?
I think that there is some element of developers feeling like there's too much red tape. When I was speaking with Representative Redmond this morning, he was discussing how much people are actually paying to put a shovel in the ground. When I hear the way he explained it, it seemed like the genesis is more on developers getting tired of red tape to develop in areas, not on the how you develop aspect. So that's my, that's my red flag of, should we really be, as a county, we need to understand what the development pushes. It's very focused on ordinance and red tape for development as well as housing study commit, study, which allows for a lot of nuance in that, of what does that mean? I spoke with him on frustrations over how is it that we're always talking about bringing people in versus just because I own a home doesn't mean I'm, I'm a rich person, it means I've been here long enough that I didn't have that increased cost and we tax shift so much to property owners that we're taxing people out of their homes essentially, but also my constant comment of it's unrealized gain. So I don't think it, I think it's more, it sounds more pro-development side than it is on what we're wanting to work on as a county of how do we grow responsibly? It's more of how do we remove more red tape, is what it sounds like to me. is what it sounds like to me. So.
I, my, when I said genesis, I was thinking more of, was this a, is this a bill that got passed in the legislature to create this committee? Or that, that's kind of what I meant. How did it, how did it get formed?
They, well, I don't know who requested it, but it's that you get people discussing it, and then they, someone that, I think Woodward is the chair of this one, actually. I think he's the chair and Redman is the vice chair. And then they put forward the committee request, and then they get approval to do it. I don't know if they, if it's, it's, I don't believe it was a bill, because they brought this forward when we were talking about housing exemptions, and that Woodward made the comment that we needed to get a committee started so before we got to the legislative session, if we were going to try to impact the exemptions. So I, I can look that up and see how and who made it happen, but I, I leaned towards, it was probably Woodward, since he's the chair of it. But I just forwarded all three of you, blind copied. So I don't know if you guys share emails, that you can see the, the actual meeting notice and what the discussion is. But there is a, on it, it says, housing inventory overview, resort cities overview, local zoning landscape, Idaho building code review, and then committee discussion.
So it looks like
I want to say toes, actually. T O E W S. That's not how he says it.
The, um, the statement of purpose, this is, uh, this is for the, this is under the Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 103. And the statement of purpose has the two contacts, Senator Allison Raby and Representative Jordan Redman. So it's a Legislative Interim Committee. And it claims its purpose is the review of local land use regulations and their impact on housing affordability and availability.
All right. That's, that's my only adjacent to committee, since it is a committee.
Well, and it also claims that it's limited to, because it says this effort will include evaluating city comprehensive plans and zoning. Doesn't talk about counties. Interesting.
So.
Okay.
I forced myself onto that committee. Alrighty. Anything further, Commissioner Domke?
Uh, that was all I had to present for today's workshop.
Commissioner Corn, do you have anything you want to say before we end?
No, thank you, guys.
All right. Everybody good? No more comments?
One more, that in 90 days approximately, you will be posting for planning positions and for zoning commissions. And last year, it was kind of a rollover because the people work so well together, let's just roll them over. And I would really hate to see that happen again. I would like to see it open to more people.
Sounds good. I think this board has had a position of, we need to interview people and look, and make sure we're selecting the best of available people. So I think that will continue.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, it is 1:54, and this meeting is adjourned.